Great, thank you. Good evening. Mr. McKinney is going to... No, Ms. Carpenter is going to lead us in the pledge, and then Mr. McKinney is going to lead us in the prayer.
All right. Let's start flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, I really don't know where to begin with a prayer given the circumstances we're in. I only ask that you make sure that you provide us with wisdom and with understanding and with compassion, and that we do what is right for our students, our parents, and our school system. Be with us as we struggle with these decisions and be with us as we worry about the results of these decisions. We ask for your blessings on this group and on this system and on this community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'm going to call our meeting to order, and the first thing that we'll do is take a roll call. So, Ms. Carpenter?
President? Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Mr. Hyatt?
Here.
Mr. Wilson, can you hear us?
Yeah.
And he's here, thank you. And I, of course, and Melly Burns, I am here. So, Mr. Superintendent?
Everything on the agenda is largely in order except for a couple of things. And it, under the discussion piece, you're going to see an item called New Title IX. These are some policies that have been adjusted because of some federal movement. And Chris Campbell, one of our board attorneys, is going to speak to those in a little while. But in the process of getting all these together, I omitted 1726 and 7232, and we worked hard to get those ready for you today. You should have found them in your box, and we sent them to Mr. Wilson via email. So if you would please add 1726 and 7232, and if you want me to give you the titles of those, I can, but I believe you have them on your documentation there. Other than that, I don't have anything to add unless there's a place where you would like to put closed session. And I believe there's been some, maybe some discussion with Mr. Campbell about the correct place to put that. Would you like to add a closed session?
Will you make that?
Yes, and I was thinking with the closed session, it looked like the discussion regarding current Plan D, Plan C is actually part of your updates and your discussion. So it might be appropriate to go ahead after public comment this one time, go into closed session just briefly to get any leave of questions you may have answered, and then you can come out and do your discussion titles. So just this time, I know you usually do closed session later, but this time it may make sense to do a short closed session after public comment.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right. So we'll add that to the agenda in that order.
Then those are the only adjustments to the agenda for this evening. Those will need to be approved by the board.
So do I have enough? Motion to approve the adjustments to our agenda? Make the motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Still hard to do that one.
We have, I know one person who has signed up for public comment. Mr. Barra, if you would please go get our speaker.
Tommy, is there personnel for closed session or not?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we do need to...
We have some personnel, but...
During closed session?
(Inaudible).
Do you think there'll be a...
I think there may be a reason to have a conversation.
Okay, why that's a motion.
Okay.
Any student matters for closed session?
No, sir. Hello, sir. If you would step up here and introduce yourself. And, Ms. Carpenter, I believe that it's okay if we remove our masks if we're speaking in public, correct? So if you would like to remove your mask to speak, that would be fine, sir.
Hello, my name is Daniel Gibson. I just have a few questions in regards to a couple of things. Of where I live on Alarca, I don't have internet or a very good cellphone service. So I wasn't really, like, up to date with what was going on with the schools and the reopening until I got a phone call last week asking me to basically pick either B or C for going back to school, which is the two days at school and then three days remotely. So I was confused of like what, like why, what is keeping the kids from going back to school at the school? So that was one of my questions. Another thing is with the remote learning, it's if you don't have that, there's going to be hotspots. Like, the fire department where I live, I could take it there for remote, like, internet access, but she's still going to be around kids. So like, why wouldn't that be put in, like, the school place? So I guess I don't know if it's a volume thing with number of bodies and spaces. Where I went to school in high school, there was a program where all the freshmen in high school all basically went to the same class together. We had like four or five teachers that would teach at the same time, and then if a student needed help, they could pinpoint the student and go help them. So if you were to do big programs like that in like the auditorium or something to where you could social distance with like multiple screens, like, I didn't think that would be a bad suggestion to see if that was possible with that. I understand busing around here is a problem. So would asking the parents to take their kids to school and being able to pick up the ones that weren't able to, like, assist in that issue in regards to social distancing on buses and stuff? And then lastly, kind of, is how long is the kind of play to keep going to the two days or remote learning? Is it just waiting for the governor to say, okay, emergency's over? Or can we like try to work on like figuring out how to like get the school to where we can get everyone in there and do the size thing? Like I said, if it's a size or volume area, you know, there could be different things set up to get people involved. Like, I know at my high school, it was a very large high school, so we would bring in FEMA trailers set up with AC and everything and have classes in there. So I don't know what the out cost on that kind of stuff would be versus trying to go remote and have people get hotspots. That might not work and all that. I just didn't know if all that stuff was being addressed because all I hear is like shifting to the remote learning side and not really getting back to the school. So I guess that's kind of really all the questions or comments that I have that I can think of, so.
So first of all, thank you for coming. We do appreciate your input and your questions. I think that there are a couple of questions that I'll just defer and let Mr. Sale try to answer them for you. To answer your last question first, no, we don't know a timeframe, quite honestly. We don't. No system in the nation knows a timeframe. You know, obviously, the ideal circumstance is when the pandemic is determined to be completed, then, you know, where all systems go. But we have no way of knowing when that will be. And the other thing that all school systems have to be very aware of is, you know, at some point, the governor could step back in and say, you are allowed only to do your Plan C. Right now, we've, school systems have been given the flexibility. We have not been given the flexibility of what the governor referred to as Plan A, which was basically bring your kids back in and do the best you can. That plan's off the table. The governor's directive was that schools had to come up with a Plan B, which does account for very stringent social distancing and other measures. Or a school system can drop back to Plan C and go remote only. But we can't go up and say, we're just going to open our doors. So...
Mr. Gibson, some of your suggestions are wonderful suggestions, and we have some of those in place. And I'm not saying that they're wonderful because we have them in place, but they're just good suggestions. As far as, I believe you have a daughter?
Yes.
Correct? As far as your daughter going to the hotspot on Alarca, which I believe is, will be at the community building there, the intent was for a student to be able to work in the car or something like that. I don't know that will be inside that building, okay? But what we will have is the opportunity for her to be wireless. And your daughter, as a kindergarten student, should have an iPad with the correct protection to help her take care of that. Now, the nice thing about that iPad and the process that we're using with our Plan B is that all of the information that she will need to work on will be on that iPad when she comes home at the end of her second day of face-to-face instruction. So our goal and our plan, Mr. Gibson, is for her to not even have to go to that place unless you just want her to. Now, there will be some supplemental material that she may be able to access if she does. We also have some other places that we're going to be setting up in town, including, do you know where the Business Ed Center is?
No.
Okay, I'd love to show you a map and show you where that is because there'll be Wi-Fi there. And our hope, Daniel, is, may I call you, Daniel?
Yeah.
Our hope, Daniel, is that we will be able to have someone employed to be there so that if your daughter has a question, she can go to that person and can ask them for help. We'll also be using, we're hoping to use Southwestern Community College, the SCC Center out at Allman. And we have even been in contact with the Eastern Band, and they have provided us a place where we can have the same type of facility there. For you, I think the best choice would either be Southwestern Community Center or else the Business Ed Center. And it meets exactly what you were asking for.
Okay.
The distance is a little farther, but the nice thing is we may be able to set that up for it to be in the evenings as well because I would imagine that you probably work in the daytime, and the evening might be a better time slot for you.
Okay.
Now, you'll have to help me remember what the other questions were.
Give me one second.
So, Ms. Burns, the first item in our discussion, open discussion tonight had to do with Title IX. And this information came to me from the North Carolina School Board Association probably about 10 days ago. And I'll be real honest with you, I haven't spent a tremendous amount of time digging into it. It was my intent to do first reading tonight and then the next time we're together, have a second reading. But Chris has advised that we go ahead and move on it. So I'm going to ask Chris to speak to these particular policies and then instruct us in how we can move on them tonight.
Sure.
And Chris, we can always come back later if, after looking at these, if we want to add amendments to them or make changes.
That's correct. Yes, sir. That's correct, Mr. Superintendent. So, Madam Chair and Board Members, good evening. On your action agenda tonight, you do have the changes to the Title IX policies. Let me give you a little background there. The federal government posted proposed regulation changes to Title IX over a year ago. They went through a public comment period, and the Department of Education recently finalized those changes, and they go into effect August the 14th. So that's the need to look at doing something right away. We come to you with policy changes from time to time that involve a lot of board discretion, policies that are optional, that have decisions that you can make. That is not the case tonight. This is required by federal law. This is required by the new regulations. And it's not going to result in a huge change in terms of what your staff's been doing, but it will require some training and some other things. But the most important part is that if there is something that deals with Title IX that happens at the beginning of the school year, and it can happen electronically, we don't have to have kids and staff members to be together for there to be a Title IX issue, especially when it comes to sexual harassment, things of that nature. So we need these procedures in place so that if, heaven forbid, something were to happen, they're in place and we can go ahead and act on them. So it is our firm recommendation, and we're recommending this to all of our school board clients, is just go ahead and suspend your rules and adopt these on a single reading rather than two readings tonight. Take your time in reviewing them. If there are changes or questions you have, we can certainly address those at a future meeting. We have obviously gone through these line by line. We're happy with them. We have no qualms whatsoever about recommending them to you tonight. And what you would be doing in a single motion, and the motion could just be to accept the changes recommended by the School Boards Association, you're going to actually repeal your existing policies 1710 and 1720, which deal with discrimination and investigation complaint procedure. You're going to replace those with two brand-new policies, 1710 and 1720, that are in line with the School Boards Association recommendations based on the federal regulations. You're going to adopt brand-new policy 1725, which is reporting process in addition to prohibited conduct. You'll also adopt Regulation 1725, which is definitions of sexual harassment. You'll be adopting 1726, which is a Title IX grievance process, Policy 4329, which is bullying harassing behavior, and Policy 7232, discrimination and harassment in the workplace. You're also going to be updating Policy 1730, which is non-discrimination, Policy 4040, which is staff-student relations, 4329, which is a Title IX grievance process, Policy 4329, which is bullying harassing behavior, and Policy 7232, discrimination and harassment 4331, which is assaults, threats in the school environment. And 4340, which is school-level investigations. So again, that is the packet of changes the School Boards Association is recommending. We recommend it. It's required by law. So we would recommend that you suspend the board policies tonight and adopt all of the school board's changes on one reading.
Thank you for that clarification. That was very helpful.
Ms. Burns, on Policy 4040, I have not had an opportunity to look at the addition that you requested that we add because we approved 4040 in a revised format in July, I believe. So between now and our next meeting, I'll look at that. And if there is a significant change that needs to be added, I'll bring that to you. And then we, I'll send it to Chris. He wrote the addition to the last one for us. So I'm sure that he'll approve it and then we can approve that separately.
Okay.
And you can add this as an action item E. tonight on your action agenda. And it would probably be good just to follow protocol if that's the desire of the board. When we get to the action agenda, we'll amend the action agenda at that point.
Okay, absolutely.
Any questions for Chris? No? All right. Personnel, there are several individuals that are listed in personnel. I believe that we've fully discussed any concerns about those. So I believe that we can move on to the next discussion item, which would be COVID rate and additional updates. And that would bring Allison Cochran to the speaker's stand.
Can I stay here? Is that okay?
Do you want her to come here, Jo, so that...
Well, we'll have to move on.
Okay.
Thank you. So I was here 10 days ago. So between then and now, these are our rates. In the United States, there have been roughly 53 million tests that have been completed. Five million of those are positive. There's been 154,002 deaths. The case fatality rate for the United States is 3.1%. And those that are positive is roughly around 9.5% in the United States. 10 days ago, it was 9.4. So it's gone on 0.1% of the positive rates. North Carolina completed test is roughly 1.8 million. Confirmed cases, 126,532. There've been 1,982 deaths. Hospitalizations is 1,057. 10 days ago is 1,188. So that number has come down. The case fatality rate is 1.5%. It was 1.6 10 days ago. And the positive rate is 6.8. And it was 7% again 10 days ago. So both of those numbers have come down. Go ahead.
It was 7 and it's down to 6.8?
Yes, ma'am.
I was writing it down backwards. I'm sorry.
In Swain County, to date, there have been 2,999 tests. We are waiting on 229 tests currently. 10 days ago, we were waiting on 317. So that number has dropped. There are 2,664 negative tests. Positive tests to date are 106. 10 days ago, there was 90. Deaths, we remain at 2, fortunately for that. The positive rate is 3.5%. It was 3% 10 days ago. So we have gone up slightly with that. Case fatality has dropped to 1.9%. It was 2%. Currently in Swain County, we are monitoring 10 active cases. That means they have tested positive with that. So that's currently what we're working with right now. Even though we've had 16 positive tests, some have come off that 10-day quarantine period. Others have come on. So we are actively monitoring 10 people. There are approximately, the last report that state gave me was incorrect in saying that there was 11 children ages 0 to 17. In fact, there was 12. So just to let you know that. So with those 16 positives, we have two children that have tested positive since the 23rd. One is very mild symptoms. They attributed to a common cold. The other one was asymptomatic, meaning they had no symptoms whatsoever. So right now, in Swain County, breaking that down, of course, 0 to 17 ages, there's 14. Or there has been 14 total.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Those ages 18 to 24, there's been 13 total. Our largest group comes from ages 25 to 49, and that's 44 people. 50 to 64 is 21 people. 65 to 74 is 11. And 75 and older, there has been three. So going back and comparing it to the past weeks, again, it shows that, like I said, the greatest amount, those ages, is from the 25 to 49-year-olds. I handed you just some information that I pulled. The first one is the facts and questions that DHHS puts out. There's a lot of information on there about face coverings, what's acceptable, what's not. It talks about the importance of, you know, children going back to school, how they're affected by COVID-19. So there's information on that. And then the other two is just some graphs for you to look at. The first one is the darker graph. The blue line is the total number of tests reported. And of course, you can see that it's going up, which is what we expect. We're almost at 3,000 tests. But if you look at the orange line, that is the actual number of positives. So that's just a visual. You know, I can say we've done 3,000 tests and only 106 are positive. But looking at this is very visual for that. And then, as well as the other one, it's the total of tests reported, again, versus the confirmed cases. And you can look, the blue line is the test-reported date. And there's been several spikes, especially, you know, right before the 4th or around the 4th. But the orange, if you look at it now, is decreasing. And that's the number, it's kind of going, it went up and it's going back down now about the positives reported daily. So that number is going down daily. I looked at surrounding counties. Graham County, roughly with the number of tests that they have completed with the positives is roughly 2.4%. Jackson County is about 4.7%. And they've had 28 people from 0 to 17.
That's total system.
Yes. And then Macon County, their positivity rate is about 8.1%.
What would be the reason for that difference in that fluctuation between counties and positive rate? Any guess at it or professional opinion on it?
It has to do some with long-term care settings where they've had outbreaks, camps, different populations, different groupings. With that, maybe, I know there was concern with the Hispanic population, with that demographic. You know, church, things of that nature.
Are there any findings related to the use of masks and the percentage of positive tests? If people were, you know, wearing masks more often or not? Is that part of what your contact tracing reveals at all?
That's a good question. I've not seen any data on that. Because whether you're wearing a mask or not, if you're a contact, then you're notified and you're asked to either test or at least quarantine at home. So they've not figured that in as a factor with the contact tracing. I've not seen that. It's a very, it's a good question.
Do you know if it was, if it's working or not?
I do think that perhaps on a national CDC level, I was in a conversation today that indicated that those things are being looked at. They've not come out with any kind of statement or anything. But definitely trying to see if there's a correlation between you wear a mask, I wear a mask, and things are going down. So fingers crossed that it'll come out.
It was just brought to my attention because I've read the whole CDC articles and other news articles on the YMC camp in Georgia and that they were not wearing masks.
That's correct. I do know with a lot of ours, I mean, we've kind of asked and they've elaborated if they've worn masks or not, but that's not part of the process. Those that were symptomatic, a lot of them weren't wearing masks continually like they should have been.
My next question is, has, in your opinion, based on the science and medical and all that, has anything changed significantly increased? Or has it stayed the same since you were last here as far as...
Yes, it's stayed the same. There's nothing, there's been no significant spikes or, there's no been outbreaks, clusters, anything like that that is concerning for our county at this time.
And I'm assuming you would know this, but I do know that the county had a scaled-back day camp. So to your knowledge, there's been no outbreaks, no...
Not within the county rec. part this we're referring to?
Yes.
No, there wasn't.
No.
Not to my knowledge, there hasn't been.
Right, okay.
And what were the progress for that, the same as far as the mask and the social distancing?
Yes.
And also the summer program and the workouts for fellow athletes, nothing?
We've had, there were no results that were noted in jump start in the summer camp program. There have been some issues that were dealt with by athletics, but they were screened out before the students came to the workouts, to my understanding. And they've been able to accomplish all of the screening procedures, which are much more extensive than what we would be using. And to my knowledge, there have been no problems. Am I speaking correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any questions?
No, I think Allison has answered my question.
Great. Anyone else?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Can you keep us, give us this account weekly?
I can. I can send it to Mark.
Get it to Mark and then get it to us.
The, just to show you, the other, the script here, this comes out from the state on Wednesdays. So I'll start looking at that for you to send out on Wednesday.
And I actually have a more question. You know, assuming that we're going with Plan B, as was voted on last time, what, if you have a point in your mind or a knowledge where it would be a situation where that needed to change to a different plan as far as if there's a certain number of cases in the community or just in the school? Or is there anything in mind that we would need to look for, for if that happens, we do something else?
There's no number. There's no magical threshold, unfortunately. And I've discussed that with the surrounding health directors in western North Carolina. And they don't have a magic number either. There has been little to no guidance from the state on that account. So that is a discussion that I would have to have with Mark and with the school board as well when we're looking at that. Is it one case? No, certainly not. Is it, you know, one case in each school building? Probably not. I think, like Mark stated last time, that it's going to probably be more reflective on the number of staff that you have to be able to teach versus the number of students, per se, that may be affected. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. I wish there was a magic number. It would make, it would make everybody's life so much easier if there was this magic number. But unfortunately, there's not. And it's, it's a case-by-case, probably in each grade, each school. And each county will be different.
And I know you're going to be communicating every day.
We'll be in communication. And there's a protocol.
Thank you.
And if we get to the point where the students coming back, and there's a protocol that we use for students as they come in. And if there are any concerns, there's a form that's filled out as the parent is called. And then that's referred to Allison right away or to her team.
There's so many uncertain things.
And it changes from day to day.
I like black and white. It's none of that.
I know.
Any other?
Any other questions?
We've gotten some additional guidance on face coverings from Campbell Shadley.
Yes.
Came last weekend. And it reflects the fact that we had already received some guidance from Raleigh about that and had some conversation. But I would like to, Chris, for Chris to go over that guidance with you. There are some significant pieces that the community needs to understand and others. So, Chris, would you go over that for us?
Sure, be happy to. So the, I think it helps to kind of think about this from a big-picture standpoint. The decision was made after lots of back and forth at the state level. And again, let me preface this by, these are state decisions. These are not decisions that the Swain County Board has any local control over whatsoever. In fact, I think it helps for folks to know that the General Assembly in one of the, in one of the session laws passed a provision that said that schools and school boards will be 100% subject to all of the requirements for school reopening passed by the State Board of Education and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So some folks have wondered, why does the toolkit come from DHHS? Why hasn't the governor actually issued an executive order about the reopening of schools? Well, the answer to that question is the General Assembly told you to follow the guidance of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So that's where the toolkit comes from. That's where all of these requirements come from because it's a, it's a health issue more so than anything else. So you're following the guidance as directed by the General Assembly. And the governor's executive orders don't really come into play. And I think it's helpful for folks to know that sometimes because they'll point to the governor's executive orders and say, well, there's nothing in there about specific face coverings in schools or this, that, or the other. And that's because the General Assembly has told you to look to DHHS for your guidance. So specific to face coverings, the guidance right now is that they are required the entire time, students from the time they get on the bus until they get home at the bus stop, that they're required to wear a face covering that entire time. At one point, there was some thought that maybe when students were seated, if they were at least six feet apart, they could take them off. The Department of Health and Human Services has said, no, they need to keep the face coverings on for the entirety of the school day, that there can be breaks throughout the school day. There is no minimum or maximum number of breaks. And I think a lot of that will be as schools work through it, teachers work through it, principals work through it, to provide effective breaks for students to be able to go outside or into a large area, take the masks off and face coverings off and take a break at that point. The face shields, which has to be a piece of plastic that wraps around your head and extends below your chin, those are only permissible for legitimate medical and other behavioral exceptions. So there'll need to be a documented exception for an employee or a student to be able to consider a face shield. And the Department of Health and Human Services is very worried about that because they say although it may protect the wearer to some degree, there's not good evidence that it protects other people from the spread or the transmission of the disease. So that's why a lot of people don't understand in the community, why isn't a face shield good enough? Because they go to Ingalls and they see the person stocking the crackers is wearing a face shield. And well, if it's good enough for the stalker at Ingalls, why doesn't it get enough for my child? That's the reason, is that the science is not there that that's that effective. But those can be allowed and we'll have to work to make those exceptions work. If a student or an employee has a medical reason or a behavioral reason, psychological reason, that they cannot wear a face covering, we will need documentation from their healthcare provider so that the school can look at a reasonable accommodation, try to fit that in, decide what to do with that particular request. in, decide what to do with that particular request. There will be some exceptional children, some special, some special education children who we already know they will not be able to wear face covering. So we would not require an adult of a child with an IEP and EC student who we already know because of a medical condition could not tolerate or wear a face covering. We're not going to ask them to go out and get more documentation from the doctor, but other folks will need it, so.
And I guess to be clear?
Yes.
The, the medical document, documentation simply needs to state, it just needs to be a statement indicating that they have?
A medical reason.
A medical reason, they do not have to disclose.
That's correct. We don't need to know, right. We don't need to know the specific medical condition necessarily, as long as the doctor says that I am instructing my patient not to wear a face covering. And, and we'll talk about this more with leave, but there is a difference between not wanting to wear a face covering at school and not being able to tolerate or medically wear a face covering. In other words, if the child can tolerate or if the employee does wear face coverings in other settings, then there would not be a legitimate exception for school, just because the school day is longer, so to speak. So there will need to be a medical need for someone to have an exception to a face covering at that point, so. And understand different viewpoints and things, but as a school attorney, I have read the United States Constitution, I have read the Bill of Rights, and the freedom not to wear a face covering in the middle of a pandemic for health reasons is not in our constitution, it's not in our Bill of Rights. It is a reasonable requirement of all staff, all visitors, and all students to wear a face covering to stop the, the spread of this disease that has very real consequences. So there is no legal issue whatsoever with this board requiring face coverings where we have to per DHS regulations, and there is no legal issue with folks who simply don't want to wear a face covering. So I'm happy to answer any questions about face coverings, and then the only other topic that I had for your discussion tonight is employee leave and to just kind of give you an overview of employee leave.
Do you guys have any questions?
Just clarify, as far as face mask breaks, what are we looking at there as far as plans with that?
I can tell you that my instructions to the principal today were in order for a, a student to have a mask break, they must be seated at their, their desk, that must be a minimum of six feet away from all of the students and the teacher, and it has to be for a maximum of 15 minutes, but as I'm listening, I'm prepared to dial that back to 10 minutes. I believe that'd be enough. Would that be acceptable? And it's not to be a, a frequent set of breaks. However, if a student is showing a level of distress, if they will have a conversation with their teacher, that teacher can then make an exception and have that student go somewhere that's away from others so that they can have that mask break. I think that it's critical though, Travis, that, that we heed what Chris said. There are exceptions, but we need to follow doc, the documentation process for that for both students and for faculty.
Is that for lower grades?
Yes, sir.
For example, I don't know that high schoolers necessarily would need to fit in with that, right?
Well, I, I think that, you know, there, there needs to be a level of discretion in that, and I would be happy to have a conversation with our high school principal about that and, and also the staff. I believe that it would be reasonable to assume that a younger student would need a break more often, and that an older student should be able to compensate a little bit more easily. There needs to be another piece that's added to this, and that is there will be no breaks on buses. If students are on a bus, we're going to expect them to wear a mask and to stay in the seat in which they are assigned. And we're still working through some of the, the pieces of scheduling that. But did, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, because I, I was thinking in high school, I don't see the need there as much as I did first grade. That, there is a definite need there. One other question that was brought to my attention, and I thought a lot, I thought about the lunch breaks. At the high school, a lunch break with 10 kids in, in this room here is fine. You got, you can spread them out. But back then when I taught, I was in a classroom that was about the size of half of this room.
Mm-hmm.
You know where I'm talking about, down there in the English and History level. And lunch break there, I think that's freaking out some of the teachers.
Okay.
So we may want to look at that. I don't know the answer to it because they got to eat sometime, but a lunch break in that, I think it's a little bit more scary than a lunch break in a large setting. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And so the conversation that I could have with our high school admin, and actually Jerry, with all of our administration, based upon the size of the room and of course, the number of students that are in that room, and then there's also the concern about ventilation. And we're looking into that as well right now.
Okay.
I, I believe that that conversation can be had and so that we can use all of the space available and use it wisely and maybe find a way to spread that out. We can look into that and take care of that, and I can report back to you all about how that's been adjusted.
Maybe possibly bring it outside during days.
I don't see, Kim, I don't see why that can't happen. There, there may be some concern with having some type of a covering, an overhead covering, and I know that there's been the suggestion for a tent, how to take care of that. And if, if you want us to look into that, we can. I don't know where we'll put it, but we can look into that. But absolutely, we, they could be outside, and there are some flexibilities that come with students being outside, as long as they are social distanced correctly.
And, and again, I, I think if they could be outside to eat, especially at the, even the middle and the high school both, I think that's great. The bigger question in my mind then becomes making sure that we, because typically, at least at the high school, they're not used, the staff members are not used to policing lunch, and for good reason, they shouldn't have to, but this is a very different situation. So if we're allowing students to go outside, then we've got to make sure that we've got eyes on to ensure that they are in fact, social distancing while they eat. And all those things I think are doable, but they just need to be thought out and, and planned for.
And Sonia has had a conversation with her staff about that already, about the fact that we're in an unusual time and it's going to take, require some unusual steps. But, you know, we're all hoping and praying, and I'm believing that this won't last forever.
Right.
So.
I mean, and another, even at the, at the middle and the high school both, another alternative, because everything's grab and go and disposable.
Yes.
You could manage a great deal of social distancing in your gyms and in the Fine Arts Center.
Absolutely could.
I know we don't like food in the Fine Arts Center, but we're in a, we're in a pandemic, so.
One of the things about, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all, but one of the things that we're going to be using our Performing Arts Center for is a place where we can supervise students of middle school and high school staff members.
Okay.
And, and that's been another conversation, what are we going to do to help our own staff? And we have developed a plan that I believe is very doable, where elementary students will be at the elementary schools that they are assigned to for their education, to keep from cross-contaminating the schools, and also we'll be using that, that particular resource for that.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Are we providing masks every day? New masks every day for our students?
The students have been provided five masks by the state, Lambert. They are washable, they're not masks actually, they're face coverings, they are washable. And the, the schools are going to be meeting this week for some planning sessions, and they'll be working on how to appropriate them so that they make sure that they get them back, but at the same, back into the school. But at the same time, we will have extra masks on hand in, in each classroom, or at least at each school that can be gotten, and on each bus, in the case that a student may forget theirs or one should happen to break.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure. I, I didn't know that the state was providing, I didn't know exactly how that was going to work, so.
Yeah, those, those masks are.
That answers my question.
Those masks are here now. Not only did the state provide five face coverings for students, but they provided five for the teachers. And as a school system, we have purchased a neck gator for each teacher, a face shield for each teacher in case that becomes necessary, and also an additional face covering with our Swain logo on it somehow for every staff member.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Are the face shields reusable or are they one time?
I don't know the answer to that. We need to look into that.
Okay.
Toby's in charge of that.
I guess the, the need to mark would be too, that, you know, the day of time on task has changed.
Yes.
If they're teaching their class and it's a 50-minute class or an hour and 10 minutes, whatever it might be, that if they want to take that class and file out that they have a plan and go outside and just let them get the fresh air, especially for lunch, as long as they supervise, they're with them, but make sure they stay a distance, that that will be good, just kind of break the monotony of sitting in the classroom with a mask on.
Yeah, I believe that, that's, that's good wisdom, Jerry, and we've been saying over and over with our administrative meetings that we're going to have to be flexible with our schedule.
Right.
You know, for so long, we've been time on task from bell to bell.
Right.
And we're, we're going to have to be flexible with how we work our classes, and we may run a little late getting the buses there. There's just flexibility that's going to be.
Good.
Anything else?
I don't know if Chris, is Chris going to tell us about the staff? You know, what kind of requirements we need if we have staff members who are not able to teach because of some medical problem or if they use up their leave, that sort of thing?
Yeah, it's, um, your name is Chris. Chris is, I started to call you Steve and I have no idea why. That is so. Yes, Chris is going to speak to that right now, Lambert. Okay.
That's right, absolutely. The attorneys were just commenting that being called Steve is a nice thing for an attorney to be called. Attorneys are called lots of things every day. So the, the employee issues are, are serious issues, and I want to preface with what I'm about to say with the, the reality that I think everyone in the room understands that facing a pandemic, facing a disease in which there is not inherent immunity, makes it a difficult and very serious conversation for everyone. At the same time, the life moves on, and certainly educators are essential workers when it comes to the life of a child, just like a lot of other services. So the, the task before us is to, to bring staff back and to do it as safely as possible. And part of that equation that Lambert was referring to, Mr. Wilson, is, is leave and how do we accommodate teachers and other staff members that have medical conditions? And I think first of all, it is important to understand that the pre-COVID environment was set up for folks being sick and folks having a condition which in fact prevented them from working. And you can still apply that same logic right now to understand leave and leave laws with one important difference, and that is that if someone has symptoms or someone's been advised to stay home because of symptoms, that's when the additional leave can also kick in at this point. So that's kind of the nuance. That's what's changed in the world of leave for employees because of the COVID situation. Last March, and this is important to understand too, March, April, May, June, we had state emergency leave. And the state emergency leave applied to anyone who was in a risk category. They could qualify for state leave and receive their pay. So we had a substantial number of employees that were eligible for that state leave and that state pot of money. That has run out. The state leave has not been extended, so as far as I know, there are no plans that I've heard of for the state to offer emergency leave to public school employees or others. That obviously wasn't a pot of money that was, was indefinite to begin with. So what we're left with is the regular accrued leave that an employee would have with the Swain County Schools, and as many of you know that were educators, some folks may have a year of sick leave, other folks may have two days of sick leave or half a day of sick leave. So the amount of leave that an employee has is going to vary wildly. And then we've got this new federal leave, and let me start there. So the federal government is now giving two weeks of paid leave to anyone who has contracted the coronavirus and is being told to self-quarantine as a result of it, that they are subject to a quarantine order, they would be entitled to that two weeks' leave. If their doctor told them to stay home because of a positive test, they would be entitled to that two weeks of paid leave. And if they are actively experiencing symptoms, they could qualify for that additional two weeks or that two weeks of paid leave from the federal government. If an employee is caring for someone who has contracted the disease or has been told to quarantine or self-isolate by a healthcare provider, they can qualify for two-thirds pay under that particular federal law. So that is the new, and then there are childcare provisions, but I really want to just focus this evening on the, the qualifications related to, to COVID. So those would be the conditions in which somebody could qualify for two weeks of pay. Let me stop right there. That would not apply to someone who is concerned that they might catch the disease because of health conditions or just a general concern or a concern over a family member. So there is no federal leave for being concerned that if you catch it, you might give it to a vulnerable family member. And that's a question that gets asked a lot, is well, what if I have someone living with me who I'm concerned about? That federal leave does not pay for that. That federal leave only pays if you are sick, if you're told to self-quarantine, self-isolate by a healthcare provider, or if the person that you're caring for has been told to self-isolate. And again, it's only two weeks worth of pay at that point. Self-quarantine and isolation is very specific as well. It doesn't mean you can go to Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, and the beach, but you're not going to go to school. I mean, it is a self-quarantine order from a healthcare provider. It is go home and don't see anyone. So that's a point, an important distinction too. There is no leave that only applies to a, a desire not to be at school because there may be more people than there would be somewhere else. If you're isolated or quarantined, you're isolated or quarantined, and that would apply to all circumstances and across all settings.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So the, the two weeks for sick or quarantine?
Yes.
Does that include if you were exposed and you're ordered like the health department to quarantine for two weeks?
Yes, if a healthcare provider, it could be the health department, it could be your general practitioner, tells you to stay home and to self-quarantine, then you can access that two weeks of federal paid leave.
And it's.
But it's one time. It's one time. So folks that, you know, they need to consult with their healthcare provider, and by federal law, it has to be at the instruction of the healthcare provider, because once you use it, you've used it, and you can't use it again.
So if we get a case in one of the schools, the actual health department has to notify the ones that's been exposed?
Right. And then we'll do that. They'll do some contact tracing and notify folks, and at that point, they may be told to stay home. Those employees were qualified for this federal leave for two weeks.
Correct.
Yep. So that's great. So that's a layer that we've got in case something happens to federal funds. Once that federal pot is used up for an employee, then we move to sick leave and FMLA leave, which still requires a serious medical condition that you actually need to be out because you are sick and/or a healthcare provider has said because of a medical condition, you must self-quarantine again. You can't be around anyone. You can't go to Ingalls, you can't go to school. At that point, you've got to use accrued leave to stay in pay status. So there may be employees that would qualify for that leave, but the federal medical, the Family Medical Leave Act does not give pay. It only gives the right to be away from work. So you'd have to use your accrued leave as a school employee to be able to take advantage of that. And that's an inherent unfairness with accrued leave. There's nothing to be done about that. Again, that's why I started with that. Some employees will have a lot of accrued leave they could use for a serious medical condition, others won't have any and would be faced with going on leave without pay. And if you're in leave without pay status, you have to pay for your own healthcare premium as well, your health insurance premium. So, but again, there is no leave and no benefit, there's no ability to say, I don't want to come to work because I am concerned about myself or a family member. That in and of itself does not entitle an employee to be away from the workstation at that point. They'd be looking at a leave without pay would be their alternative if they're simply not comfortable. And, and folks have decisions to make. I call these adult conversations. I mean, in every facet of our life right now, folks are deciding what their tolerance level is for work and making decisions accordingly for themselves and their family. But there was some, I think because of the state leave, there was some misunderstanding that maybe there was a big pot of money that if folks were concerned or, or within a risk category, they could simply just stay home and continue to be paid. That's not the case. The last point I'll make is even if someone does have a health condition, we can ask them to telework if they're able to telework. So if they're not actually experiencing the disease and having the symptoms of the disease, if they just have to self-quarantine, we can allow them to telework at that point too. And we'll be making those decisions on a case by case basis as well.
And Chris, if you would, just please clarify, because.
And and Chris, if you would, just please clarify, because it it gets very confusing when you, we have so many conversations. Um, but everything that you just went over regarding leave, this is, you you discussed federal and state laws, none of these leave statuses are up to the local school administration or the local school board. We have no say in it. We can't, we can't say, well, we don't agree with that, so we're going to do something different.
That's correct.
These are federal laws and state laws that we are bound to follow.
Correct. So, the leaves that are available, one comes from the federal government, and it's the two weeks of leave with those requirements that attach to it. And then you move to your state accrued leave, and whether or not you're actually sick and have a reason to be away from work. The local school board has no ability to broaden those categories because there is no pot of money that you get access to be able to do that. So, all of this is federal law and state law. That's correct. These are not decisions by the Board of Education.
Just wanted to clarify that.
That's a very important point. And again, I think, you know, folks thought there was a lot more flexibility in the spring, and there was under the state emergency leave, but uh, that pot of money has now been used up.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lambert.
Um, if say, for instance, if we have a third grade teacher who has uh, school-aged children, and they are to do the remote learning for for their children, um, do we have, can we, can we allow that teacher to teach from home in order to take care of that, or are they required to be in school?
That that is a great question, Mr. Wilson. The, so the the decision, well, first of all, the state of North Carolina has required every school board to offer online learning for every parent that chooses it. So, you will need a certain number of staff to accomplish that directive. And again, uh, this is when you, that needs sympathy for your superintendent and your HR department, trying to figure out how to allocate staff is always a a very difficult puzzle. So, there'll need to be enough staff to do that. Then, in order to operate school on Plan B, there will need to be enough uh, staff to al- also supervise those students. And as we discussed earlier, the need for staff has not decreased because less students are attending, it's actually increasing because to maintain the six-foot distance, you're able to put fewer students in a given area, which means you need more adults to supervise those students. So, the simple straightforward answer to your question is yes, the Swain County Schools could allow a teacher whose students are learning at home to work remotely, to telework. However, the difficult thing is, first of all, there are going to be employees that qualify for medical exemptions. So, a lot of times, they're the ones you want to hold slots for to telework because that's the only way medically they can continue to work. And that's the only way medically they can continue to make a living, is if they're allowed to do some kind of telework. So, you've got that group, then you've got a group of teachers who you may need to be in charge of the remote learning for pedagogical reasons, or because of the way you've structured things. So, it's a domino effect, and certainly, at the end of that progression of priorities, I guess is the best way to say it, you start to look at other factors and other criteria of what groups of teachers you would allow to telework, and that could be one of the reasons. But I want to be real clear, that's a very difficult discretionary decision for the administration to make, and it's very much a balancing act of having enough teachers and other adults to actually supervise the kids that will be at school.
So, uh, in reality, Swain County Schools could say that all staff members, all teachers, must report to school every day in order to be working. They could do the remote learning from school?
That's correct, and several school districts have decided to instruct their staff, even when they are doing remote learning, to report to their workstation, uh, to to do that remote learning. The only exception to that, of course, I want to keep saying this because it's obvious, but it bears repeating, is true medical exemptions, where employees uh, cannot be at school for safety reasons because they've contracted the disease, or they've been ordered to quarantine, would be the two obvious examples. But otherwise, yes, and then several districts have opted to do exactly what you just said.
Okay, alright. So, um, okay. Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely. And let me say too, it hadn't come up yet, I know y'all have looked at it and talked about it, but certainly, a a parent could be frustrated to know that the child of a teacher might have some kind of opportunity for daycare during the day that they, as a parent, don't have. And I think, again, this this disease creates these very difficult situations, but that is not a legal issue at all. In fact, it is fine. In order to have school, we have to have adults doing their jobs. If that means we have to provide some alternative for the school-aged children, then that is a legitimate or rational decision of the school district, the administration. So, I I do know some parents may be upset, thinking that maybe the child of a teacher might have some daycare that they don't have, uh, but again, that's a necessary uh, issue for a lot of school administrations in order to have school at all. And it's a legitimate perk of employment. Uh, it just is. So, it it, I can understand frustration, but again, that's not a legal issue.
So, just because a teacher um, chooses to have her students, her her own children learn remotely, we don't have to do anything to accommodate them? We could expect them, even if they're doing remote learning, we could expect them to be at school doing that?
That is correct, and they would not qualify for leave under those circumstances that you just um, outlined.
Mm-huh.
That's correct.
Okay. That I I think it's very important that we look at that situation and make sure that we don't make accommodations for some and not for others.
Well, Lambert, we've, we've been very careful in uh, what accommodations have been applied to various personnel. Um, and if you would, if you want Mr. Dills to speak to that, he absolutely can. But as uh, as Mr. Campbell has said uh, this evening, uh, these are case by case, and they're very difficult decisions.
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
We're doing our best to take care of everybody that we possibly can, in every way.
I understand that, yeah.
Any other questions for Chris? Steve?
Tommy, do you have um, numbers? I mean, our our principals and their staff have been working extremely hard to solidify the number of students that will be, that have been selected for B and C by their parents. Do you have those numbers for us?
I do indeed.
I'm pulling this thing down because it's driving me crazy, smashing my nose, alright?
Yes, sir.
Can I say just one thing?
Absolutely, Mr. Wilson.
I think it's very important that, as a Board of Education, that we make sure that um, just be- just because a teacher's children, a teacher chooses for children to be taught remotely, that does not mean that we will allow them to teach remotely. I don't, I I think that um, we have to look at the big picture and not at just what people choose.
It certainly means that we don't have to.
I have to, you know.
I I believe that Tommy's going to speak to that, um, Mr. Wilson, hang on.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wilson, sir, it certainly means that we don't have to. Um, we ran into a situation, and we have one in our county actually right now, where a employee's stu- uh, school-aged students do not go and are not in school in our LEA. And their LEA is not offering school for uh, in-person, face-to-face instruction for children that are her children's age, okay? So, we have somebody that works for us, that we're trying to help with their childcare piece by allowing them to help us with remote instruction, because somebody's going to have to teach our kids remotely. So, we're trying to help her by giving her the opportunity to be able to do that, because it's not her fault that her kids don't have the school to go to that they did have, that was removed from her. Does that make sense? So, we're looking at it in a case-by-case basis, and I don't want to say blanket, and I I'm going to do whatever y'all tell me to do because I work for y'all. But if I've got a group of, if I've got a parent who doesn't have the ability to have her kids taken care of, because they go to a different school, they live in a different place, and she drives here to go to work for us, and for me to say, well, I can't let you go to work, but if I don't let you go to work, and I'm just going to throw a a specialty class at the high school, or whatever is no longer able to be taught because I'm not going to be flexible and allow you to work remotely, and try to figure out some way to facilitate that, I I think we have to be honest with ourselves and try to, and try to help where we can help, and we have worked, in HR, we've worked real hard to try to make sure that we have taken care of all the needs, and also for some people that have just some stuff, and I don't want to say, I don't want to say this in a way that where it sounds like a negative connotation, because I don't mean that. There are people that have other entanglements in their life. For instance, we have a teacher that has spoken with us, that lives with their grandparent, who has all of the risk factors that you can possibly imagine, because they live and they're a part-time caregiver for their grandparent. And they are not inherently at risk, but the grandparent may be, and so they have some things that they're concerned about. And if we have a need where we can plug them in, and they've asked for our help, and then we're, I feel like that we're, at this point, that we need to add some discretion into some of those individual decision-making times, and we're trying our best.
I don't have a problem with that. I I think my problem is, I just want to make sure that we don't have teachers who choose to have their children.
Two.
At home.
Yeah.
So, that they can stay at home with them.
I understand exactly.
Because if you, you know, um, I don't have children, so if if I wouldn't have that option.
I understand totally.
You know, I I just, I just think we have to be more careful about that.
I do too. I don't, I I understand what you're saying, a hundred percent, understand what you're saying. I just uh, I just think that, well, I'm, what I've been getting to is that they're, that each case is unique, and we have to weigh it out until merit.
Right. Yeah. And and it's just, I I feel like as long as we're meeting the needs of our kids, you know, of course, I support Plan C, but we're not doing that because our board chose to do Plan B. So, um, you know, as long as we're meeting the the needs of our kids, you know, I'm okay with that, but I just, I'm I'm, I think that we have to be fair and equitable to everybody. And and so, you know, if we have a teacher who doesn't have uh, young children, who doesn't have uh, somebody who is high-risk, you know, what does that mean for them? That means they have to go to work. I I believe that our teachers who are doing remote learning should be working out at the school, as they're, as wherever they are assigned. They should not be coming from home, unless it is, there's a, like a doctor's statement saying they need to be at home.
Duly noted.
Of course, now, that's my own, that's not our thoughts, Tommy, not anybody else, so.
I understand.
I just, I just, uh, you know, and and I, I of all people, am very, I'm uh, I'm very aware of things that we can deal with. That's why I'm not at the meeting. I have ITP, I cannot be, you know, I can't subject myself to any way to the virus if possible. But uh, you know, um, we we just need to make sure that people aren't saying, well, you know, my great-grandfather, who lives down the road, comes up to my house, and I'm afraid that I might bring it to him. You know, so, um, I think it's important that we have medical documentation for these kind of things.
I do, and I think that we have to be as equitable as we possibly can, and when, that's been sort of the issue with this, from from my office's standpoint, is while we're gathering data, time goes. And while we uh, get the people that are requesting these things, we have to ask clarifying questions and get supporting documentation, and all that takes time. And until we solidify a a plan, that it it was, it was harder for us to be able to make sure that we knew what we were doing, but I can assure you that we'll make every effort to be as, as equitable as we possibly can, and in the way that we provide for our teachers, because the most important thing that we do, and the only reason that any of us are here, is to provide for our children. And we're going to have to make sure that we are taking care of them.
The um, the biggest thing that I've done, have in my mind is, uh, you know, I know we have to have teachers who are are planning and doing their remote learning, but I think that those teachers should be working in the schools, just like the teachers who are with the kids, because those teachers with the kids are high, at high risk. Those teachers doing remote learning can be in a, in a space where they don't, they're, they're not even subjecting the kids.
Duly noted.
I think you've got to look at it case by case.
It's just what you're, you're saying. I agree with what he's saying, but also, as long as y'all are, I mean, we've been, they've reached out to all of us, a lot of the staff has, with their concerns, but with that, you've got to look at each one case by case.
And, you know, at the end of the day, we've got to be fair, and we've got to be equitable, and we want to do those things.
Yeah.
And we also, and we have to provide, that's the, but that's the first goal, is to provide, and then to be fair and equitable, and it's kind of like, and the way I look at this, is we have people who have legitimate needs, and then we have some other people that it may not be as much of a need as it is a want because of factors that are, that surround them, and we're still going to have the need to provide for distance learning. And if we can mitigate, and we can meet some of these, some of the people with concerns in the middle, then, you know, we, that's, that's, we're still going to have to meet the needs of kids, I guess is the bottom line is, we still have to meet the needs of children.
And and I understand, I mean, this whole pandemic thing is so unknown to everybody, and it's, it is, there, there is a lot of fear, and I understand that. And I don't, I, you know, I I don't want, uh, I want us to do what we can to make everybody safe, because we've got a great staff, but, you know, I I also want to make sure that that we aren't being used.
Agreed.
So, Tommy, share some numbers, and then we can move on with the next, with the next piece, because those, that, those are all of the additional information points that I have.
Okay, a s- a specific question, how, where you, where do you want me to start?
Start with the elementary, what are our percentages, um, because I know, I don't know that you, I don't want to go grade by grade. What are our percentages of students who are going to be on Plan B versus Plan C? Has that changed any from last week?
East is it seventy thirty, seventy percent is Plan B, thirty percent, um, seventy percent Plan C? The reason that we.
Wait, wait, wait.
Seventy percent Plan B, thirty percent Plan C.
Okay.
To be, to be clear, sixty-three percent we have gotten in touch with, and they say, absolutely, we want Plan B, and that's what we're saying. We are planning for seventy percent, because we have seven percent of our people we have not been able to get in contact with because of bad phone numbers and things of that nature. So, we are planning to provide for them in face-to-face instruction, because it's easier to pull them to Plan C than to leave them in C and try to pull them into B. So, the ones that we can't get in touch with, we are making the assumption that we are needing to provide for them for face-to-face instruction.
I want to add one piece of information on that. Our, as I said, our folks at the school level have been working extremely hard to make contact with every single person. Uh, we still have the problem with communication because of bad numbers sometimes, and so, um, there may be some variance still that we may not even have addressed on whatever day we come back to school, but we will address those as they come to us. A case in point is the young man that spoke to us today. He doesn't have internet, he doesn't do, he doesn't do social media, therefore, it took a phone call. That's what we're doing, okay?
At West, it's around sixty-six percent uh, for Plan B, and thirty-four percent for Plan C presently. Um, at the middle school. At the middle school, sixty-six point one-nine percent Plan B, twenty-six point six-two percent Plan C, and seven point one-nine percent that we can't get in touch with as yet. At the high school, that it's, it's coming in about eighty-twenty right now. Eighty percent for day, face-to-face instruction and twenty percent for remote instruction.
And the reason I want those numbers out in front of us, and let me back up before I get ahead of myself. And of course, pre-case is going to be five days a week, and so I think they're, they're working at sixty to seventy students right now. But the reason I want those numbers in front of us is those numbers are a little higher than they were ten, ten days ago. And so, that's causing us to do some additional thinking about who's going where and how we're gonna make all those pieces work, okay? And it's also creating a little bit more stress on our transportation system, but we're working through that as well. Okay? Any questions about numbers?
You got teachers?
Teachers?
The seniors?
About ones that have requested accommodations?
No, the ones that are gonna be there.
The ones that are gonna be there?
Be in the building with students.
Be in the building with students?
Plan B.
Plan B. This minute. Thank you, sir.
I know, I check it daily.
All right, this minute, we are looking at, I'm gonna have to count. Give me just a second. thirty-two, forty-four, forty-nine. I'm at forty-nine and I don't have high school numbers. I don't have high school numbers. My intent today, and what I've worked on today, is to try to figure out a way, after we received some new information about people and, and their concerns, I started to look at some things a little different, try to shift some things around. So, I don't have hard numbers at the high school level yet. It's of note that some people that have voiced recently their opinion that they don't wanna be in face-to-face instruction, or they don't think that we should be, maybe. I'd never heard anything from them that had, that they had requested any type of accommodation. And so, I was trying to find today a means of seeing what we could do to help them be comfortable in the work environment.
And so, Tommy, did, was there some kind of email or something that went out to all the staff members?
Several.
Let them know that if they needed accommodation, they needed to get in touch with you?
Several. Yes, sir.
And then there was emails that were sent out?
Emails that were sent out. We did, we did two staff surveys, and it was noted at the beginning of the surveys on both of those that if they had questions about accommodation, or if they wished to, to request accommodation because of an under, because we laid out the reasons that you would be requesting an accommodation, and if they met those criteria to reach out and let me know so that we could begin the documentation process, it's called a self-identification process. So, we gave that, we started that a couple of weeks ago, and then we went back again and said, "Hey, need to know right now, where, where's your heart?" You know? And we hit that again, and I heard from a few, I've heard from quite a few people, and some people I've, you know, we've, we've had, we've had to go, "We need your documentation." And how much of this is, you know, and it's, it's like when you try to level this. Some of it is because if somebody's had a heart attack within the la, you know, had a heart attack, or they've got emphysema, or they've got this, or they've got that, it's at a different tier of concern.
Absolutely.
In coming into the, into the workplace.
You're talking about if the teacher, if our staff was, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Their staff or their grandfather or somebody, the teacher themselves.
Yeah, that, and that's the way we had to level it out, though. If it's yours, if it's someone that you come in contact with every day, we put you on a different tier in trying to decide the means of how we would be able to provide for our kids. Because with the numbers that we've got, we're still hovering around seventy percent of our kids that are gonna be in the building every day, and that's great, but we still got thirty percent we have to provide for. And so, in preparing for that, if we only went with what would be just absolutely the reason that you can't, as a teacher, be in that classroom, we wouldn't have enough to, to fulfill the obligation that we have to the kids that if, that their parents have chosen to utilize Class, Plan C.
Yeah. So, then you're brought down to the next.
Yes, sir.
Level, yeah.
And that's the reason that this takes so long, is because, and, and it's, and I said this three weeks ago when we're in here, I wanna be, I wanna be right, and I'll sacrifice being right or correct to be, instead of being fast. I, I don't, I don't care so much about getting it fast if I can't do it correctly. So, I, we've set our mind around what we, a process that we think will work, and putting in these people that are requesting accommodation in different tiers, and looking at it as objectively as we can and making decisions based on data. And as new data presents itself, we have to readjust our line of thinking. And, and so, sometimes it's, it's gonna take some patience and, and some grit, and we're trying to give that.
And, and it may, somebody that we determine to be remote to be back in the classroom.
Yes, it could go the other way also, absolutely.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what the teacher's to do, but, you know, we gotta do what's best for our kids. Thank you, Tommy.
Yes, sir.
As of the information you have today?
Yes.
With the number of teachers and the number of students on Plan B, do we have what we need to accommodate Plan B?
We do have what we need to accommodate Plan B. It's like wish lists, and this, I wanna use an analogy because that's the way I talk. I can't help it. So, it's like back in the day when you used to get the wish book, everybody got the serious wish book, and you'd circle what you wanted. And that's kinda where we're at, is that we may have some that want some things that we can't give them, that we have to try to tell, that we have to say, "This is what we need from you, and this is what we need you to do because that's what's best for kids." And we can't document that you have a reason that you have to not be here, so we're gonna have to ask you to be there because we need you to be there for kids. And be as consistent in asking that as we possibly can.
High school, how many new rooms do you have?
New rooms?
Occupied, new?
New rooms? Don't know, that's not.
High school?
Yeah.
High school.
Two classrooms.
How many classrooms?
We have, we have three new classrooms right now. And as soon as we're able to move into the administration, we'll be able to take the, that current admin guidance area and turn it into two very large classrooms. I think I'm speaking correctly on that.
I think you're right. Uh, yeah.
I have a parent who texted me, said that they can't, can't hear us with our masks on, so I don't know what you recommend us do.
Speak up louder.
Speak up louder.
Based on my limited mathematical skills, two and two, I don't know what it is, but that comes out to about at the high school with the rooms we have now, it doesn't always work out that way per subject matter. But the rooms we have now, including the gym space, including the little theater and all, about eight students per classroom, with three more, that lowers its sum, with two more after that, which be mid-fall probably, then it's gonna lower that even more. That's important, I think, based on the classroom space that you've got.
And when you do the math and you base it on teachers, and you have, say, forty teachers that are gonna be at the high school, for instance, and I'm using round numbers.
Right.
So, I mean, because we've still got some work to do on that end, because I told y'all this three meetings ago too, the high school's the hard part. I mean, and it really is from a planning perspective, it's the hard part. If you've got forty teachers that are teaching, and they're gonna have eight per, forty times eight, you know, that's three hundred twenty kids face-to-face, if you're gonna do eight per space. But now, some spaces are gonna be able to take more than that, and eight's a low number.
Well, I'm lucky, we've got about five hundred sixty up there, haven't we?
Yeah, that's good, that's a good number.
So, that, that, if you divide all that, you're coming up to two hundred twenty-five a day.
Yeah, two twenty-five a day. So, that's what I'm saying, so, so we're well within what we can accommodate, absolutely well within it.
As, as far as space is concerned, and, you know, one of those classrooms that you were thinking about a few minutes ago that was so small is no longer a classroom.
So, it says three classes in the.
New portion.
In the admin set.
Three?
Three.
That's, that's right. I was just thinking about the two on the front, but there's another one that's along the back. That's right.
Can they get those built in about two weeks?
Um, for the right amount of money.
Everything's doable with enough money.
Yeah.
But we do, we do have approval to afford with that, once we get those pieces out.
Yeah.
There's a caveat on that, and you, you know about construction, Jerry, you've been involved with it a long time.
Yeah.
So, we'll get there as quick as we can. We're trying.
But that, that way up too.
Yes. That's all the new information, Ms. Burns, unless there's something else that you all want tonight.
Does anybody else have any other questions for discussion?
That takes us to the next, the next element on the discussion list, which is, which is Plan B, Plan C. I believe that we've discussed that fairly well. And I don't know that we need to go any farther with that, but it's at your discretion.
Does anybody have any other, anything that they want to discuss further about Plan B or Plan C?
I guess, as far as timing of when students will be notified about if they're going to be Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, is that?
My hope, Kim, is that we'll be able to do that by the end of this week. We really need to be able to because that only puts us one week out from August seventeenth. But again, it, it's the, it's the numbers issue that have continued to shift on us. The, the numbers of students have grown, and so we're looking at what do we do with that. The principals met today to begin the process of selecting Plan A and Plan B, not Plan A, Plan B students for A and B days, because they're looking at the transportation piece. And that's, that's moving along. I wish I could say that we'll have that done tomorrow, but I can't do that. The goal is by the end of this week and then make announcements.
Would there be, and then there may not even be a need for this because the numbers are looking pretty, pretty close, but would there be the potential if East just tops out at a higher, much higher number than those at West who want in-person instruction, of shifting students if we need to for space, like those that are like real close to the east-west, whatever that line, dividing line might be in our county? And, and I'm just thinking strictly from a space perspective, like if we ended up with more kids that wanted to go to East, then y'all are gonna kill me, right? Quit asking questions.
We, this is, we had this discussion today.
Yay. So, I'll let y'all think about that.
The answer to your question is, in a theoretical world, anything is possible. The realistic pieces of that, it would be very difficult. But if we get to that point where we're looking at numbers, absolutely. As far as space is concerned.
And we have no idea to know who's gonna really be there until we start.
That's gonna, we're about seven percent off in our communication with parents right now, so the answer is yes.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, and some of those parents who said they were gonna send those children, they decide not to. You know, you don't ever know.
That.
Things, things, things change, and so we don't really know until the, the day school starts.
We're looking at it very closely.
All right, any other questions or concerns before we move on? Okay.
That's all of the discussion. So, with your approval, we'll move on to the action items.
And we need to amend our agenda.
Right, and, and I apologize for not having it in there and not seeing that, that totally got past me. So, we'll be adding an E at the end of that, which will be, I believe, am I correct, Mr. Campbell, that it will be the approval of the Title IX documents?
Yes, Action Item E will be approval of all of the changes recommended by the School Boards Association, and for the board to suspend its policies and adopt those on one reading.
So, do I have a motion to amend our agenda?
Sure.
All right. I think we'll just go around and vote one at a time. Lambert?
Yeah.
That's right? Yes?
Yes.
Melli's, yes, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
So, that was unanimous. Thank you.
Um, Melli, I don't think that we, if we had put the minutes of the last meeting.
We're getting ready to.
We're getting ready to do that right now.
Okay, uh, okay.
That's okay, no problem.
So, Action Item A is that very thing, Lambert. I recommend this.
Okay, I'll treat that.
Okay. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approves the minutes of the July sixteen, twenty-twenty open session meeting and the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty special called meeting. You have copies of both of those.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Wilson and a second from Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
I'm yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, so that was unanimous.
Action B comes with a caveat, and, and that is, at the last meeting, the motion was to revisit the reentry plan for B or C if there were changes that you as a group thought merited that. And at that point, I need to turn that over to you, Melli, as the board chair, to move forward with however you feel is appropriate.
Do you, I have somehow misplaced my minutes. Could you, do you have them and can you? Okay, let's read the motion as it was worded. Thank you. So, in our last meeting, Mr. McKinney made a motion to approve the hybrid B plan for students while providing Plan C at the request of parents under the guidelines that conditions in Swain County stay the same or improve. He also added, if within four weeks, conditions get worse, the plan can be changed. Mr. Hyatt seconded the motion, and the motion passed in a vote of three to two. So, that was the wording of our motion that was passed ten days ago. So, with each of you having heard all the information that we've received tonight, the numbers that we've received from Ms. Cochran and the, from the Health Department, and all the discussion that we've had, the new guidance that we have on the wearing of face coverings, it, do any members feel the need to revote, or are we comfortable with the vote standing the way it is?
And, Madam Chair, I think the best way to, to handle that, since the situation has not changed as far as the, the Health Department numbers, that you had three board members that voted in favor of that, and that is the decision of the board. So, it'd be appropriate to see if any of the three that voted in favor of it want to make a motion to reconsider. If not, then it would just fail for lack of a motion, and you could move on to Item C.
Okay. So, to Mr. Hyatt, yes or no?
No.
Mr. McKinney?
Conditions have gotten worse, so.
Okay, and I'm in agreement with that. I, I have a statement that I've written, and I don't know if now's the time to read it, do you think? And so, you all just have to indulge me this moment. I will try to speak as clearly and as loudly as I can so that this comes through. And I, I just wanna start out by saying that, as we've all stated repeatedly in this room and outside of this room, and in every conversation that we're involved in, this is a very difficult decision. And it's difficult because we all know and, and fully believe that our educators and those working within our system fully believe that children are best served when they're in our buildings. But we're in the middle of a pandemic, which none of us have ever experienced before, none of us have ever had to navigate our way through. So, it makes it very, very difficult. And I just want everyone who is listening or, or might watch this at some point to understand that these decisions are not being made lightly and they're not being made just off the cuff. We are all stressing over them more than perhaps you realize. We are all stressing over them, uh, more than perhaps you realize. But over the past few days, we as a board have received several letters, multiple letters, I will say, from Swain County staff members. Some of the letters have made compelling arguments for us to continue as we have voted on, to continue with our Plan B for students and staff, for the students' families who have chosen to have their students back in the building, all while continuing to offer Plan C for those students whose family feel like remote learning is their best option. Other letters, um, have voiced their concern over the Plan B part of our reopening plans. They've voiced their concerns over offering face-to-face instruction and then have stated their desires to begin the schools, school year solely under Plan C. Of the multiple letters that we've received, one of those letters was a very well-worded letter that was crafted and written by an individual. And then, um, it had multiple signatures attached to that letter. And so of the potential 31 signatures that were on that letter, 26 of the staff members actually signed their name. Five of those staff members chose not to sign their name and they signed them anonymous teacher from and indicated the school that they were from. And I just, I'm just going to be blunt and say I've sent a survey that's being sent out, that's being sent out with complete anonymity guaranteed. If a letter is being crafted and being sent to recipients, I don't hold any value for anonymous. I think if you feel strongly about something and you're at the point where you're crafting a letter, you really need to sign your name to it. So as far as I am concerned, I'm not speaking for any other member here, but as far as I am concerned, that letter had 26 valid signatures. So enough said on that. I'm gonna move on and step into my preacher mode, as Mark calls it. And I'm gonna pose a question to every one of us in the room, to everyone watching, to everyone who works in our system, to everyone who's going to send a child into our system. And even those of you who are choosing Plan C and choosing Plan Cs for valid reasons. To be clear, I don't expect anyone to answer this question. So I'm just posing it for you to contemplate and think about. And it's a question that I ask myself on a pretty regular basis. And my question is, are you, as an individual? Are you, as the person who is in charge of your household? Are you doing everything within your power to follow those CDC guidelines that have been laid down so clearly to us since March? And that would be to wear, wait, and wash in your personal lives. Our school system is being held to a very high standard to incorporate these, um, guidances that have come from CDC. And so in our personal lives, are we willing to hold that same standard? So when you, the generic who, you, whoever's out there, when you attend an extended family function, are you ensuring that you are wearing your masks? Are you ensuring that your children are wearing their masks? And that they are staying six feet or more away from their playmates? Even outside, because the guidance is a mask on if you're any closer than six feet. Are you ensuring that you're not seated at a table across from an extended family member? Someone who does not live in your household? Are you ensuring that you're not seated across that table sharing a meal with them? These are tough questions. They're hard questions. But it's the things that we are being told will reduce this disease in our community. So all of that to say, it's going to take all of us, every one of us in this community, following those guidelines to begin to see a decline in our disease rate, which in comparison to the entire state and in comparison to surrounding counties, is low at this point. Our disease percentage is low. And now I'm just gonna go a little personal on you. So for anyone who might be sitting there thinking, wow, she's on a roll here and she's really sticking her nose into our personal lives and she doesn't really get it, I just want you to know I do get it. And now I'm gonna cry. My precious mother, who lived a long, beautiful life, was in a congregate nursing home. And so from about March 9th until about 12 hours before her death, I had no one-on-one contact with my mother. The nursing facility that she was in, they didn't just close down their building, they closed their grounds. So I didn't even have the opportunity to go, like you're seeing people on TV, and put my hand against the window. I couldn't do that. 12 hours, approximately 12 hours before she passed, we were allowed to go in our room, in her room, and say our goodbyes. So I get it. I get what personal sacrifices are taking place within our community. And from a professional standpoint, for those of you who again think she doesn't get it because she's not in a classroom, she's not looking at these kids face-to-face, Google it, pull it up, however you want to. The dental profession is the number one profession at risk for contracting COVID in a work environment. And dental hygienists are the highest in the office. We stand at a greater risk to contract COVID even than a dentist. So I have many, many, many personal concerns about stepping back into that environment and will have some tough decisions to make as my job continues to unfold. But I say all this to say to every individual, it's personal, it's difficult, it's hard. But we want to help our children. And I think as Mr. Campbell put it, teachers are essential. They're essential workers. Our children need you, we need you. And it's not easy. There's not an easy right answer. You can't just go down a checklist and check off 10 yeses and one no and go, we're good. We've got this figured out. That is just not the way this situation is unfolding. So while you've had to indulge me in my little personal statement here, I will speak for the board when I say this. We are committed, committed to meeting frequently and often and reassessing and following our Health Department's guidance and making sure that we're following the data and following the trends and knowing what's taking place in our community. And we'll reassess and make adjustments in real time as that information comes to us. So, thank you. I'm done. You're welcome.
So that brings us to Letter C in our action items personnel. I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education grant a leave of absence to Madeline White for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Um. Oh, yeah, that's my.
Mr. Wilson, this is, uh, Madeline White, who I believe is a relative of yours.
So I will, I will accuse myself of this.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Yes, that was a yes. Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
And then Mr. Wilson recused himself.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Rob Crawford as mechanic at Swain Bus Garage effective July 23rd, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? I had a motion for Mr. Hyatt and a second for Mr. McKinney. Mr. Wilson, do you approve?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. That was unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Jason Sawyer as custodian at Swain High School effective August 6th, 2020.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll go around the room opposite, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
This next one is difficult for me. It's not that the others are not. But there's never been a finer person, in my opinion, to work for Swain County Schools. And I don't mean that as a slight to anybody else that's on. She just has a special place in my heart, uh, because of who she is and what she's represented. So with a heavy heart, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the retirement resignation of Rachel Lackey as Fine Arts Center Director effective 31st, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I, I sure hate for that to happen, but I'll make the motion.
So I had a motion from Mr. Wilson and a second from Mr. Hyatt. Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Sean McCarthy as varsity football coach effective August 4th, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Um, I quit motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Wilson, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
That was unanimous.
How do you say Ms. Gilbertson's first name?
Candy.
Candy? Thank you, because I would have totally butchered that.
I did too, I was correct.
Okay, this spelled C-H-A-N-D-I. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Candy Gilbertson as a full-time occupational therapy assistant effective August 10, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, we'll start with you, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 That was unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deanna Booth as teacher for the sixth grade virtual leadership camp effective August 4th and 5th, 2020. That will affect about six students. They're going to bring them in, um, to the middle school and video, um, instructions on how to come to school, the processes that will be available and implemented for their, their screenings and things like that. There'll be soc- social distancing and they will be away from all other personnel.
That's awesome. Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
That was unanimous.
And I also recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Sally Butler as teacher for the sixth grade virtual leadership camp effective August 4th and 5th, 2020.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Yeah, that was unanimous.
Um, Item D is something we discussed 10 days ago. And we were finishing up the, uh, the bidding process. And then I sent each, I asked at that point if I could, uh, get an approval via email from you as long as we brought that to the next meeting. And so, uh, I sent that to you. We have copies of that. So for public approval now, I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the online learning contract with Edmentum for the 2020, 2021 school year at $99,000.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And that was unanimous.
Item E, uh, again, has to do with Title IX. And I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Campbell if he would make that statement of this is my recommendation to you per, uh, his recommendation to me.
Be happy to. And I think the easiest way to do it, if you give me just one second, is let me list the policies so that they'll be in the minutes. So the action of the board would be to take the following actions. Repeal existing policy 1710, 1720. To update policy 1730, 4040, 4331, and 4340. And to adopt new policies 1710, 1720, 1725, 1726, 4329, 7232, in addition to regulation 1725.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to take the action as Mr. Campbell described.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, we'll start with you, this time, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 And that was unanimous.
Now that completes all of the action items on the agenda for tonight. You'll notice the calendar of events. Uh, we're coming up on the start of the school year, Teacher Work Day on the 10th and then mandated workdays 11th through the 14th. I am not certain what our September meeting date will be, but it will be the, the regularly scheduled meeting, Ms. Burns. Unless you, uh, uh, decide that there needs to be an additional meeting. As we've said so far, though, there will be information coming your direction, um, from, uh, Ms. Cochran and from us as well between now and then.
Yeah. So our, our normal meeting would be the second Monday. I'm looking at a calendar, I'm not just looking at my phone here, sorry. Would be the second Monday, which would be the 14th of September. No, wait a minute. Yeah, September, right? Or the 1st?
September.
Yeah. And we meet the second Monday, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the 14th. And when is the first student day?
August 17th.
17. I would be comfortable, um, with having, eh, eh, even if it is just a very short meeting, I would be comfortable having a second meeting in the month of August on maybe August 31st, two weeks after school's opened, to just... Yeah. To just kind of look at things. So, so two weeks after our start date.
So that would be a special called meeting?
That would be a special called meeting.
On August the 31st. And the purpose of that meeting would be to just get an update on how things have been moving forward and also to have Ms. Cochran again provide us with updates at that point.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah. I think that would be wise. That would make me more comfortable. And reassessing, mm-hmm.
Is it six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. And, um, we'll get right on finding a place for that, okay? We'll try to get that back upstairs. And at any other time, if, if you decide that, uh, there's another need for a meeting, please.
Exactly.
Let that happen.
And I think that's the other thing that we really want to stress to the community is, if, if necessary, if, if we see trends going in the wrong direction, if we have concerns, we can have a special called meeting and, and deal with whatever that circumstance might be. We're not just relegated to having these meetings as, uh, planned at this point. We can, we can always meet more often than not if we need to. Okay.
That leaves the virtual leadership camp, which we've already spoken about. There's one more item that's not on here, but it's come to our attention. I believe at the end of last week. And, uh, there are some delays, uh, with the high school construction right now. And the primary reason for the delays with the high school construction have to do with, uh, the inability to this point for the carpet manufacturer to provide the carpet. the inability, to this point, for the carpet manufacturer to provide the carpet that's needed for the new spaces. And that was, that was totally unforeseen, and we can't get our CO for those spaces until the floor covering is down. And so I am in constant contact with our building folks at the, at the high school. And we are also trying to get in touch with our fire marshal. And I want to explain that, why I said it that way. Our fire marshal for Swain County fell off his, I know this is going to sound bad, but it happens, it's an accident. He fell off his tractor and he broke his shoulder. And he's, he's out until September. And so I've made contact with Kevin Siegel, who at one time worked for the county, to help guide us in what our next steps are, because we need to make sure that if they don't get the space on the outside of that high school in a condition where students can have egress, is that going to put us in a fire code dilemma? And I want guidance on that for safety. So Kevin is going to work on that tomorrow. I will keep you updated on that as, as often as we have information. Our plan is to be back in there August 17, just like, just like we had before, we were thinking before. But you all know how construction goes, and we'll do the very best that we can do to make that happen, okay? That's all I've got.
Does anybody else have anything?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
And that's really just speaking to the teachers and staff that reached out to us as a board. I think I counted at least 36 direct communications from individuals. And the genuine voices, thoughtfulness, care, professionalism, and love, that whatever side they were on as far as Plan C or Plan B going forward, I was grateful to get those. I, we read everywhere, I read every word, and I know the board did. But I'm grateful to serve along with you in this system because it's, it speaks volumes as to why you're in this profession, why you're doing what you're doing, is that your genuine care for not only your students, but your families and your, your community. So thank you, and please always feel free to speak, speak out and tell us what you're thinking, because it's, it's, you, you matter and your voices matter, so.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? That was unanimous.
Thank you all.